I'm Chief to bug the award because the first responders from the fire department had not been recognized. And my staff and I have talked about individuals who have responded. In my tenure, we've had three deaths at our housing, and that's been very difficult. Fire Department's been called every time. And this year was time to recognize a fireman or two. Fire man or two, which is going to change because Ken's going to hire a woman. And there's no way to come up with one individual because we've had so many responses from the fire department that have been filled with dignity, compassion, warmth, intelligence. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, that takes us to our question of the meeting, our first public comment period for this evening's meeting. I have several names here who asked for the opportunity to speak this evening. So maybe I just may I'm down in one. Actually, I guess I appear to be down in one. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. First on the list is David Mayberry.
David Mayberry, 1014 Georgiana, representing Code Choice PA, Fluoride Choice PA. This statement is currently posted. With respect to the individuals I greatly admire and respect, this council has failed to address and properly resolve the code question. You have allowed yourselves to be bullied. Due diligence has been provided to you by Dan McKee. You chose to ignore the recommendation by Hugh Spencer to challenge the legality of the petition in front of a judge. A head-in-the-sand approach to this situation is a poor choice by you for our residents. This is not a question of let the people speak. It is a legal question that demands a legal answer. Redemption is possible. By their own initiative, Our Water, Our Choice has stated that they pushed this petition to intimidate you. If there is an ounce of concern for the residents of Port Angeles, we say to you, the originator of the petition and the only one who can call for this, we, Code Choice PA and Fluoride Choice PA, demand that you stand here and now before this petition is put forward and agree that it is in fact deceptive and misleading, and request this council refuse to send it forward to a vote. Ignoring this demand will cement Our Water, Our Choice's failed position on both the code question and fluoride secession. What say you?
I want again to make sure I clear, understand. Eloise, have you asked for the opportunity to speak this evening?
Yes, I have. But I'm going to leave a microphone.
My Eloise, and I ask the same question of Harvey Kanan?
Yes.
Okay. So Eloise, then followed by Harvey.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Eloise Hailen, empty chair of Our Water, Our Choice based in Swift. I'm speaking tonight for Our Water, Our Choice. At Pages L-22 and L-23 of the agenda packet, staff is recommending that the council hold a work session to consider the merits of an ordinance that would require council committees, advisory boards, and commissions to provide a reasonable opportunity for public comment. This is already a statutory requirement for a second-class city, and to get this right for the public is one reason Our Water, Our Choice petitioned that Port Angeles become a second-class city. We support more opportunities for public comment. In 2006, Our Water, Our Choice sponsored a local initiative that made it illegal to put any medication, including fluoride, in city public water supplies. The initiative was very popular, backed by 2,500 signatures, to give perspective, less than 5,000 people voted in the last Port Angeles municipal election. Given the overwhelming popularity of the initiative, the 2006 city council could have just adopted an ordinance to prohibit putting medication, including fluoride, in public water supplies. In 1951, 56% of Port Angeles voters rejected fluorization. And in 2015, 56% of city water customers rejected fluorization. Our Water, Our Choice requests that this council now adopt an ordinance to prohibit putting further medication, including fluoride, in public water supplies. This would demonstrate council responsiveness to the public and make a change to a second-class city unnecessary. Please take public comment on our proposal to adopt an ordinance to prohibit putting medication, including fluoride, in public water supplies. We're moving beyond the situation that Mr. Mayberry addressed. Hello, bye.
Thank you, Eloise. Harvey?
I'm Ken See. If you're out there too. My name's Harvey Kanan. I live at 1600 Kane Lane, Swift, Washington. And I'm speaking tonight. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the lady who was here who spoke on behalf of those who've suffered domestic violence. And she said, we need to shine a light on this issue. And that what's hidden and kept secret, well, it just festers. But we have the same problem with violence, only it's international violence. And you know what? We're not properly speaking up and addressing it. And let me tell you something, it's even a bigger problem than domestic violence. Right now, someplace in the Pacific Ocean off the coast of Washington DC, I mean, of Washington State, is a Russian submarine loaded with missiles, nuclear tipped, and that has the coordinates already programmed in. And those coordinates are pointed right here at the Olympic Peninsula. And you might wonder why. Well, as it turns out, the Olympic Peninsula has the world's largest repository of nuclear weapons on the planet. Over 3,000 nuclear weapons are stored here on the peninsula. And if things go crazy in Korea, if Donald Dunkhoff pushes the wrong button or says the wrong thing, as he does with amazing frequentism, well, guess what? There'll be no notice, and we will be the supreme target. We will be ground zero because they have to deal with this problem. The Russians, you know, they're not our enemy. China is not our enemy. Iran is not our enemy. Washington is our enemy. And Donald Dunkhoff is our enemy. And we need to start thinking about that and get serious about what's going on. Because I've been around 70 years, and the only time comparable to what's happening right now was in 1962, the Cuban Missile Crisis. And we're on the very tip of losing it all, losing the world. And you know what? Either mankind will put an end to Donald Dunkhoff and his idiot administration, or Donald Dunkhoff and his idiot administration will put an end to mankind. It's just that simple. Now, one of the people, I've got some quotations here from Ron Paul, Dr. Ron Paul. And he's saying that he's gone around talking to contacts.
Harvey?
Yes.
Your yellow knight has come over to your...
Okay, well anyhow, we have the ability to nullify this. We can take steps to, you know, symbolic steps to let tell the world. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I have more other individuals who have signed up for the first public comment period. Let's please recognize there is a second public comment period later on in our agenda. Let's move on to item D, late items to be placed on this or future agendas. Remember, the council is supposed to have something to do with this conference.
Actually, I would like for a future agenda. I know that it's in our information packet as to the wave cable contract. And I know that it's getting closer, but if we can just get, again, just, I need to know where it's at. You know, that would be great to get some more information about this contract.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Sissie. Okay, that gets us to the consent agenda. I've been prepared to read it. Is there any item on the consent agenda that the, here with the council, had the further discussions? Seeing none, I'll read the consent agenda. City Council minutes, March 21, 2017, and April 4, 2017. Expenditure report, March 25, 2017, through April 7, 2017, in an amount of $1,358,913. Wave franchise extension time ordinance, and waterfront development phase 2C (upland phase), Project TR02-2003, final acceptance.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Any further comments? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Foes, if any? Thank you. We have no public hearings this evening, so I'm going to move on to ordinance is not requiring a council public hearing, specifically the 2017 budget amendment number one, which will require us to read, conduct a first reading, and the following presentation. This matter will continue to our meeting May 2nd. So we turn the time over to our finance, our interim finance director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have the first budget amendment of the 2017 year. And often, the first amendments are kind of routine as far as looking at what's coming up from the prior year that just didn't get done. And so there's some carryforward in it. We did have a study of the engineering time allocations and made some changes to that. That resulted in a lot of bulk in this amendment, but it was something that has been in process that just didn't get done for the budget process. And other than that, Serena, oh gosh, I said I was going to remember how to say her name right, Karazosa, is our staff member who put this all together. So she's here. Do you have any questions, any specifics?
Time is yours.
As I mentioned, this is the first reading of the first amendment, 2017 budget. It's basically comprised of three segments. The first segment, as the first mentioned, some capital projects that will reach 2016 to 2017, as well as some 2015 projects that will be pushed into 2018 or beyond. The second category that's comprised of is the reallocation of some protonel. And those have been moved out of the general fund and assigned to utility. We did this to more accurately show whether time and our workload is spent, and it also resulted in a savings to the general fund of about $102,000. The third category for this particular amendment is budget corrections during the 2017 process. There were some items that were over or underestimated, and those have been corrected on them. So if you have any questions, I would be able to answer.
Reading members of the council, if they have any questions. Okay. Let me read the ordinance. Ordinance of the City of Port Angeles, Washington, to renew the 2017 budget and funds. And again, this matter will be continued to our first meeting council meeting in May, which will be Tuesday, May 2nd. Thank you, the vote.
Thank you.
That takes us to resolutions not requiring a public hearing. That's item H in the packet, H1. Biosolids, city water and project sole source resolution for the President Pre-Purchase Agreement. And I think, Greg, I think you're going to lead our discussion.
All right, so Mayor, council, this proposal for you today is a resolution for the sole source purchasing of a screw press for a planned replacement of our aging antiquated belt press, which creates biosolids out of wastewater treatment plant. Several months ago, you approved a professional services agreement. We're kind of in change to begin the design of the replacing of the belt press with a screw press and a couple of the systems within the solids building. We're at the point of that design, about 90%, where we need to move forward with the purchase of a screw press. It's a long lead item. It's about 30 weeks to design and manufacture. And to have the construction contract line up with the delivery of a screw press, we need to order the screw press in advance. We are going to FKC Company, which is local screw press manufacturer. They're on 18th Street. And they will be the supplier of the screw press. They've been working with Kennedy James to design the exact press, screw press that we need for this replacement. So the other option is you wait till you order the construction contract, and then at that time, you have to, there will be a delay in ordering the screw press. It takes 30 weeks. So by procuring in advance the construction contract and the delivery of the long lead item are better coordinated. With that, I will take any questions you might have on this. One other thing, the, so the city will not be paying the cost of this screw press at this time. What happens is we order the screw press, and then the order upon award of, upon award of the construction contract, this procurement contract then becomes the responsibility of the construction contractor, and then they will take the responsibility for paying for the screw press as part of their construction contract.
Mr. Wade, does he have a question?
Not so much as a question, but a comment. This came before the Utility Advisory Committee, where I sit as full chair, and we, for the rest of my folks I sit on council with, this became quite a discussion. It's a bit out of the ordinary to pre-order a piece of equipment that is going to be needed on a project that actually doesn't exist yet. So you got to stick with me for a minute, and let me explain. So the idea is this repair or replacement is necessary because of aging equipment that's no longer supported from a manufacturer. And this is an identified way from staff to expedite this repair. Luckily, keeping our fingers crossed, even as we go forward on this tonight, that staff won't have to machine a part that doesn't exist on anyone's shelf. So the idea was to expedite the project. This did come out of UAC, if I believe right, with a recommendation for adoption. Again, the idea is to expedite, and everyone to be aware of, there's only one piece of equipment down at this wastewater treatment plant that does this. And if this equipment fails, then what I'm saying is our wastewater treatment plant, a portion or process, is going to fail also. So I just urge that we vote to adopt and go forward with this.
Thank you. Ken See, you have something to add?
Just the same comment that at the UAC, you know, everybody ended up supporting this. It was obvious that is something that needs to happen, so we all did support this.
Well, I think it's quite wonderful that we have a situation that's obviously of some urgency. But fortunately, we have a company locally that can be of help to us. I think that's just great. Any other comments or questions before I read the ordinance and prepare for motion? A resolution of the City Council, the City of Port Angeles, Washington, authorizing the city to purchase the FKC Model BHX 800x4500L screw press and associated accessories to FKC Company Limited, a sole source provider of the FKC Model BHX 800X4500L screw press and accessories. Motion to adopt the resolution as read?
Second.
Any further comments or questions? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed similarly? Thank you. Thank you, council.
Mr. Mayor, before we go into the next one, it's the harbor cleanup process. I need to recuse myself as I work for the Lord of Economic Drive.
Okay. We will excuse you. And Sissie is referring to item J, Contracts of Purchasing, which is the harbor cleanup process. Anchor QEA Amendment to the Exhibit C Work Order Number 3.
Yes, I'll excuse myself due to my position in the court.
And this is packet, in the packet J1. Your board, your name is on the memo?
Thank you. This is a request that the council approve a work order with Anchor QEA, which is one of the technical consultants hired by the PLP Group. And actually, it was almost four years ago now that the PLP Group hired Anchor to do some special projects with regard to the PLP's obligations under the NRDA process, National Resources Damages Assessment Process, which is a federal process. And in the 2017 budget, the city has already allocated money that is sufficient to cover this work. What we haven't done, what the council hasn't done, is to authorize this specific work order. And so we don't need any funding to pull along with it. The funding's already been appropriated. We simply need to authorize this particular order. And this particular order is to do a test project to determine the availability of a sand cap to be put on certain areas of the harbor as a remedy. And so it's simply a test project. It will help with our negotiations with the NRD trustees. So in a nutshell, I'd say, if you have any questions, of course, I'd like to answer.
Those of us who remain, have anybody that have any further questions? I guess it's not so much a question, comment, this process that will be undertaken, is this something, is this kind of an innovative approach to how we can deal with? Is this something that's never been done before? Is this something that could bring...
No, it's not innovative at all. It's this, the sand capping has been done all over the Northwest. What they're going to be testing is whether it works in our particular harbor with our particular tidal conditions.
All right. It's, Mr. Colson, do you have something?
Oh, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, please do so.
I move to be authorized, city manager, to execute on behalf of the city work order number three to exhibit C of the Anchor Environment Services Agreement to authorize Sand Cap project in substantial accordance with terms set out in this memo and to approve minor modifications to the work order as needed.
Second.
I believe that it's a relatively inexpensive project. It does keep moving the harbor cleanup in a positive direction when things seem to run slow for so long. And so I hope that this process will work. I have my questions about it, but I think that it's necessary for us to move forward, so I'm taking the motion.
And I second because I believe it's necessary for us to move forward.
All right, well, thank you. Any other comments before I call for a question? All those that are there with the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Foes? And our passengers, you know, it's like, could we invite the council member, the Under Contracts of Purchasing, item two, is equipment purchased in replacement of a wastewater vacuum jetting truck, number 1649, that's in your packet as J3. Correct?
Correct. So before today, it is the request to replace an aging vacuum jetting truck, which is utilized by the wastewater utility. As you'll see by the cost, it is not a cheap piece of equipment, but it is a critical piece of equipment for the wastewater field crews. It's a little, so to give you some idea of the cost that occurs, this was originally bought in 2001 for $235,000. 10 years later, we bought a similar, just water, storm water. It was $363,000. So about $120,000 increase. In the next six years, the price is now $510,000. So this equipment is not inexpensive, and it is increasing in price over the years, but it reduces manpower significantly for the wastewater. We only have two, two members, two men in the wastewater crew, field crew, at the present time. And this truck allows them to do the work of three times that, that number. So as has been requested by the council in the past, we did analysis of past maintenance repair. So since we've had this piece of equipment, about $130,000 of maintenance repair has been put into it. $80,000 within the last six years, and due to the age, we expect to be another $80,000 to be put into it in the next year to mainly afford to replace a lot of the mechanical pumps and vacuums that are better in this vehicle. So you're looking at about $200,000 maintenance repair. Again, the, so there's a trade-off of how long do you keep this piece of equipment, investing in maintenance repair at the same time? We're looking to resell this, so the resale value will go down in the future, and the cost of buying new will go up in the future. So it's, it's a trade-off of when is that sweet point of buying a new... So it's, it's a trade off of when is that sweet point of buying a new, new vehicle, minimizing the future cost of maintenance repair, also reducing the increased cost of a new piece of equipment. So based on the analysis, staff recommends that we move forward with the equipment at this time. It has been budgeted in the wastewater utility for this amount. And once procured, and then we'll continue the setting aside funding for replacing this in the next 15 years or so. Again, so in 15 years, we've got the funding to, to replace it. But again, it is a, it is a manpower multiplier for cleaning out our wastewater system. And it is amazing how clogged our pipes can get. You think it's just wastewater going down there, but we pull out gravel, we pull out lumber, we pull out rocks and stones. And another thing is roots, this, we use this to clean out the roots of the trees that then penetrate through the cracks in the pipe, block it up, then the sewage blocks up behind the roots, and you have overflows into businesses and houses, and then we have claims against the city for that damage. So reduces claims and improves our wastewater system, and it's required by permits to keep our manholes and sewer piping clean. With that, I will take any questions you might have.
Deputy Mayor, can...
Mr. Fulton, you had me at sewer backup and overflow. So I make a motion to approve and authorize the City Manager to surplus vehicle number 1649 and upon receipt of replacement vehicle. Oh, and approve and authorize the City Manager to purchase a new vacuum jetting truck through the Washington State Purchasing Contract, including tax and vehicle accessories, not to exceed $510,000 to make minor modifications to the purchase contract if necessary.
One second then.
Motion, executive, Sissy, a comment?
I do. I wanted, I know in the report says that we're going to go ahead and surplus this, and I wonder if you have any idea what the expected resale price might, would it might bring in?
I don't at the present time.
Okay, because I wondered whether that was something, you know, to begin the account for the next...
No, I'll, absolutely. The, whatever we get for this piece of equipment will be going back into wastewater and be applied to the account for equipment, future equipment purposes for wastewater utility.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Collins, and then Mr. Gates, if I can.
It does appear that we've reached the point where any more money we put into trying to maintain the equipment is going to be too expensive and counterproductive, so I support this. It seems like we've gotten the useful life out of this, and everything where it's going to cost us $4 in the future as well, or present as well as in the future, and we're satisfied, I'm satisfied that we should go ahead.
Mr. Gates?
Craig, I've been thinking back to when we purchased the last garbage truck, which was also outrageously expensive, but during that research, we found that there were a lot of new design aspects and features on a newer truck that actually saved a lot, not only in the maintenance, but also the maintenance costs and things like that. Is this new truck, is that more technologically advanced and...
So one of the big things in this truck, it's a 10-yard body, so it has a larger storage tank, so it can store a lot more material that is sucked out of the pipes, reducing the travel time and emptying time that you have to use to continue going to the decant facility at the transfer station where we emptied it. So more productive. It can hold a lot more, and it has three axles, so the weight, it can hold the weight of a lot more material, so you don't break up the process.
Thank you. Any others? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by the same side? Motion carries, thank you. Kansas reports, this...
There's one that...
Oh, I'm sorry, that's the knuckle boom truck. I may not want to, we would not want to take care of that, I'm sorry. J3 is, is pointed out, equip... I have J3.
J3, on page J5.
Well, it's on, it's page J5, that is, agenda J3. Equipment purchased, the replacement of the light operations knuckle boom truck. I think that's correct again.
Yes, I'll take that. So again, another purchase for replacement. Again, we did the analysis of the future maintenance repair costs of maintaining the knuckle boom truck. So over the past six years, we spent $50,000 in maintenance repair. In total, its lifetime, we've spent $67,000, and we spent another $40,000 of required maintenance for this truck. It's 22 years old, near the end of its life, and a lot of replacement parts are not available. One of the things we're looking at, and Dan McKean is always looking for us to do, is reduce our fleet. And what we are looking forward to do with this procurement of the next boom truck is to surplus two, two, knuckle boom truck for the light operation division and another boom truck in the water division. By you, by procuring this one boom truck, we can surplus those two. They'd be shared between the utilities and reduce our maintenance costs, reduce our storage of parts. And then as these two boom trucks are sold, the price that we receive from the trucks goes back into utilities again to supplement the equipment purchase of our next vehicles.
Okay, any questions of...
I do. What is a knuckle boom truck?
It's, it's a crane attachments that allows light operations to lift poles, other equipment into the air, so it has to have a certain amount of lifting capacity. The water division boom truck is also a crane type piece of equipment. Unfortunately, the, the water division boom truck doesn't have the lifting capacity of what we really need to be useful for the water division. The truck we are specifying out for equipment, for light operations, will have that lifting capacity to take care of both water division lifting requirements, pipes, and also light ops lifting requirements.
Okay.
Councilmember Mary?
I think that I do agree with Mr. McKean. This is great that we're getting rid of two and replacing with one. I also like the price of this. I operate a knuckle boom truck of sorts, and they're extremely expensive. So with that, I would like to make a motion to approve and authorize the City Manager to purchase a new knuckle boom truck for the light operations division in the amount of $194,239, including sales tax and accessories, and to make minor modifications to the purchase contract if necessary. And also approve and authorize the City Manager to surplus both vehicle number 143 and number 1360 upon receipt of replacement vehicle.
Second that. This has been made in second, to approve the recommendation of staff. Any, Mr. Collins?
Well, it also occurs to me that if we're going to surplus a couple of boom trucks and whatever we just, the vacuum jetting truck, that we ought to get some interest from people elsewhere, come up here and get some equipment, instead of worrying that nobody will show up for this stuff, maybe there's a smaller city out there that would be thrilled to have these pieces of equipment. So I think the timing is good to do both.
And I guess one of the things that just came to mind, and I'm sure that they'll be, you can let us know how it's going to be, but, so the cost will obviously be divided between electric and water, and I don't know if there's a percentage, so again, it's going to come out of both of those accounts to pay for this truck.
So the primary user will be electric, and then we'll have leasing rates, and so whenever a utility procures a piece of equipment for themselves and then leases it for another division or utility to use, there's a leasing fee that the water division will pay to the light ops division for the use of that vehicle. So we usually buy it by the primary utility, and then any other utilities who use it, pay them back for the time, just like leasing it.
That makes sense. Okay, great, thank you.
Very quickly, Craig, what is the process of surplus in these vehicles? Do they go to auction, or are these actually listed to...
Normally, we go to several auction houses around Washington State to get a wider That's our primary way of doing things.
Okay, thank you.
See none other, this, while we call for the question, and the motion has been made in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, if any. Thank you very much. So I'm glad to, I jumpstarted ourselves. Back to council reports, I can't remember where I left the last bit. If I can write, Mr. Collins?
Why don't you start with your last, so I...
Okay.
And Sissy, you're up.
All right, so I know May Second's going to be the farmer's market, and I'll be there, because I did miss the previous one as well. And then in the, I know that in the information packet, we get some information from the Port Angeles Vision Center report. If you could ask them to please put some of these things in graphs, so we can see a longer trend, I would appreciate it. It just gives you more information in a quick visual. That's it.
Mr. Mary, number four.
Oh, thank you. I didn't bring my notes, but I attended the Olympic Peninsula Tourism Commission on behalf of our council, and so many exciting things are happening, and I will bring my notes for next council meeting to share with you, but there are advertising and magazines all over the United States and all different demographics, they advertise, we do, we share co-op bands during offseason, because we don't really need it in summer, and there's some new program, and, and that they, they have pictures of the Olympic Peninsula, and there's pictures of picked up by photographers, and it's gone viral. I don't understand SNAP and some other things, so I can't give you an exact description, but they're using all kinds of new technology that is just taking pictures, just viral of the Olympic Peninsula. So we're, we're getting active shoulder season tourism projects, and it's exciting, and the peninsula's getting new recognition all the time.
Councilmember Gates?
Well, I'll be joining Sissy for the farmer's market, the first Saturday of next month, and it was unavailable last time. Also, I'd like to make an announcement, this is a little bit ahead of schedule, but it's, I think, something very exciting for Port Angeles. On June 21st through the 23rd, that's Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, Port Angeles will be hosting the Wings of Freedom Tour, that's with the Collings Foundation, will once again bring their vintage bombers to town for static display and rides, a B-17, and a B-24, and a B-25, and a P-51. And in addition to that, which has been very, very successful over, I believe, nine visits over the last 17 years, the port will be adding some additional festivities to make it an airport day for the public. We'll have open house facilities, the terminal will be open, we'll be having barbecue dinner, and a band plan, and a car show, and a lot of different facilities, a number of which will still be in the planning stage. So I would ask that we save the date for June 21st, and join us for our big party at the airport.
Thank you. So 21, 22, and 23. Mr. Witter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to take this opportunity to say thanks to the sponsors, community supporters, volunteers, moms and dads in support of the Kids Trout Derby that we had just recently on, here on the 8th, at Lake of Park Ponds. We had a great turnout, and again, we had great support from our community. I can't say enough, I went again this year, my youngest grandson outfished my oldest grandson, and those type of memories will not be forgotten. Thanks.
He will be talking about, we won that one for generations to come. And what's interesting, lady, of course, the fish will get bigger every year. Mr. Collins?
I just wanted to indicate that I think the city of Port Angeles is the only one who has stepped up to support the straight shot new bus run from Port Angeles to Bay Ridge Island.
Mr. Collins, I have to apologize at our transit meeting the other day, I misspoke. The fact that that letter has not been drafted is entirely my responsibility, I've had a...
We're going to do it.
We will take care of it this week.
Okay, good. And the second comment I have is that a family matter is going to take me out of town on our next council meeting, May Second, and I will try diligently to call in that I, the timing is such that I might not be able to be here for the meeting on May Second. If you'll excuse me from at least being here, and I can't call in, you can excuse me from leaving.
I forgot, I can't finish that.
Yeah, okay.
I have to save the date, and this is so important, next Thursday, April 27th, you all are invited to the Clough County Community Service Awards. It says, reception 6:30 PM, award ceremony at 7:00 PM, and this is where we annually thank the volunteers of the community that have done amazing jobs. And this year, our police volunteers have been awarded, will be one of the awardees, there's, there's four, and our own police chief will be introducing them. And these are police volunteers that have been serving since 1999, so thousands of hours serving our community. We see them everywhere, we see them downtown concerts, at the pier, Wanderlust Festival, everywhere we are, we see them, and we get to honor them next Thursday evening at the Holy Trinity.
We spend 110 to 160 million dollars annually, depending on the construction season, so we vote on how that money is spent. And I do recognize there are folks in our community that are specialists, that will do a deep dive on something that they like, because you have to in order to spend a lot of time looking into the matter. So having said that, I value a person's opinion that takes the time to do a deep dive on this. I just think it's, it's a step in the right direction. I do appreciate Councilmember Collins' comments. We should have a universal public comment period. One of the problems that we identified last week, just for everyone's information, is it, it needs to be uniform, it needs to go across committees, or each committee needs to be looked at, but there has to be uniform rules across the board. For example, what we talked about last week was the second comment period. Well, we only meet for two hours, and sometimes we go right up and actually over the time on just our agenda items, so we're going to have to be conservative on our comment period, and I don't know what that final result is going to be, but I just want everyone to know that the UAC, we're open for discussion, and kudos to staff for bringing this up. Let's streamline it, let's get it across the board. I think it's the right, a step in the right direction. Again, I value everyone's deep dive opinion on matters before us.
Thank you. Sorry, I missed you. Thanks.
Well, I, I would like to add one comment, and, and thank you for the, the thank you, but I have to say that I have received comments from the public, I've received comments from a lot of the council members, I mean, this is something that has been brought up by a lot of people, and so it's something that I'm looking forward to addressing with the council, and I think it'll be a great work session.
Now, we'll bring us to our second public comment period this evening. Is there anybody in the audience that we need to, would like to, there are comments, please, for the record, Amy Redd.
Marilyn Smith, PO Box 2498.
Marilyn Smith, PO Box 2498. First, I actually, regarding surplusing equipment, I'm actually surprised that Port Angeles isn't, doesn't participate with publicsurplus.com, which is an online auction. It hits all of North America and it gives a lot wider audience. Clallum County uses that, the college uses it, pretty much all the major cities in the area use it. You know, in western Washington. So I think we've, and I've never seen Port Angeles on yet, and I look at it all the time. I think it'd give us a much better choice of selling equipment and also surplusing scrap. So it's never there. Second, I would really like to know this, the new owners of the mill, if, and I've read about Bio-Pal, or what it's called. And they mostly make craft paper, they make cardboard oxes out of old cardboard oxes, they do recycling. But I really would like to know if we're going to end up with any mill smells, because I think that's something you should know about before it happens 18 months from now. And then third, I'd really like to bring up why we're still putting bio solids in our garden lorry, because there've been a lot of studies on this by the EPA, as well as the Department of Ecology, and there's two other, the USGS. All of them say that it's really, may not be really safe because we're only testing for two bacteria when there's over 17 that could be passed on to people. I think it's, it's kind of, I won't buy it. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, let's hear it for someone who has spoken.
Hi, my name is Rachel Lee. I live on 3124 South Peabody. And actually, what I wanted to talk about is two things. The first one is that on the 22nd, there's going to be a huge celebration of science. And it'd be wonderful if the city council could go there, because it's an all-day event from 10 o'clock to 4 o'clock, many different speakers to celebrate all the different people in our community that are in the field of science. And it's going to be a family event. Also, during that week after that, until the 29th, which is also going to be on the 29th of March of time change, that one is also going to have speakers, but in between, they're going to have science cafes. And so I just highly recommend our public and the city council members to go to that.
April 22nd, where?
It's going to be at the pier on the 22nd. And that is, it starts, the first one is at 10 o'clock at the landing, they're going to have speakers. Then at noon, that's where a lot of people are going to go down to the pier, there's going to be booths down there. Everybody's going to have tables and there's flyers all around town that have this.
Can I just take you off? I will be there, so.
Right on. Okay. And then the other thing is that I wanted to talk about was, last week, there was a concerned community member, they came down and spoke about addiction and the problems with addiction. And what I wanted to talk about is that there's a great deal of organizations, nonprofits, and groups that are coming together talking about addiction. There's a great deal of misleading information, hostility targeted towards people that are recovering or have the addiction that's very strong, and it touches everybody. We are all touched by this. We either have had a friend, child, or a family member, or somebody that is somewhere, we can throw a rock and it will hit somebody, and guess what? That is the person that is covering some type of addiction. And having that kind of toxic view, we need to have everybody look at the people as humans. This affects everybody. And what I want is for people to acknowledge that we are all people and that we need to educate ourselves about addiction instead of using addicts as scapegoats. This is a community that has a lot of love in it, and we need to embrace that and we need to pull our heads together and come together so that we can help people instead of pulling them apart. Thank you.
The bitter reality in running the first city council is that I found at least six people who are wickedly smart, passionate about our community, and really want to make a difference. They are intimidated, however, in all or part by being minority, poor, as in to work on council properly, they couldn't afford to work less, women. With respect to Sissy and Sherry, as you are the exception, LGBTQT and single and/or a single parent. This is still an old man's game with respect to Jim Moran, who is the prime candidate. And kudos to candidates Lindsey Schromann-Worm and Travis Bervin and recently Jake Elkhell for helping to break the mold. Now essentially, we pay each of you $500 a month to show up twice a month for a couple of hours and consult with Dan McKeen. You are also asked to serve onboard, come to special meetings with ample scheduling time. Showing up is not a hard job. Some have a problem with that. I have made a statement at council emphasizing the importance of the strategic planning meetings. Two on council didn't even bother to show up at these meetings for both days. If council is a scheduled conflict, the door is over there. At minimum, when you do show up, consulting with staff before beating a dead horse every single time would be appreciated. The janitor is complaining about having to clean up.
Is there anybody else who would like to take a moment?
One needs medication.
Okay, seeing none, we will, the chair, the chair, the chairman for the general?
I so am.
Mr. Mayor, the second and third, for the date of 7/27 PM, all those in favor, if they say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ladies and gentlemen, if they have anything you want to say.